I'd like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay.
Who was your question?
Somebody up that way. Chris.
Matt.
Matt, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Communications, see the attached listing. And if anyone has any questions, we'll entertain them. For all of our visitors here tonight, did everyone have a chance to sign in? If not, would you please do so? Thank you. Okay, public comment.
Now, is this the only time for public comment, or do we comment later also?
You can do it either way, if you want to leave this part. Does anyone have anything that's not under the Eureka Resources LLC? LLC. No, then we'll do it that way.
You'll do it when, after Eureka?
When it comes up on the agenda, just down a little bit further.
Okay, and then we can have a public comment then? Okay.
Alright. Full business subdivision land development review. Core finalized conditional orders. New business subdivision and land development review. Eureka Resources LLC industrial land development Susquehanna oil and gas wastewater treatment facility, Dimmock Township preliminary plan requesting preliminary approval. See attached memo.
Eureka Resources LLC three fifteen second street willing support has proposed a water treatment facility type of industrial development on eighteen point four acres of land released on Douglas and Joanne Heitzman along favor twenty-nine and Dimmock. The Heitzman property borders the current contact wastewater treatment facility. In reviewing the plan, the following items are called to your attention. By definition, this is a water treatment type of treatment facility type of industrial land development. Application, applicable ownership and filing fees has been received. Development plans were prepared by Timothy Worley of Track Engineering and State College. Eureka Resources is leasing eighteen point four acres of the Heitzman property and ten point eight nine acres of Dallas property management's property. Eureka intends to develop the land with a main treatment plant building, a main bulk transfer area, salt bulk transfer area, crystallizer equipment area, with one equipment tower with a height of seventy-five feet, a parking lot for twenty-three vehicles, and a thirty-foot wide access drive. Access to the site is through adjoining property owned by Dallas property management. PennDOT highway occupancy permit is pending. A sewage holding tank is proposed for the site. DEP approval of sewer planning will be required prior to preliminary approval. The NPDES industrial waste permit has been issued January eighteenth of this year. Approval of the NPDES permit is required as part of the preliminary approval of the land development plan. Air quality permit was also issued this year, January twenty-fourth. Stream and wetlands crossing permit is pending. Eureka has set their facility wetland setbacks at three hundred feet, which is greater than required by Susquehanna County Saldo at two hundred feet. A six-foot-high safety fence will surround the site. Lighting is present on the proposed plan. Trees will be planted and all disturbed areas shall be planted in accordance with ENS and PCSM plan. Following construction of the water treatment facility, the trees will be planted to provide streaming from the new development. As per landscape notes, this will be part of the required requirement, I'm sorry, prior to granting of final approval for the plan. The Dimmock Township supervisors were notified on February ninth. Their next regular meeting will be held March seventh. Staff recommendation is to grant preliminary approval of the Eureka Water Resources Susquehanna Treatment Facility, conditioned on receipt of DEP approval of the sewer planning, approval of the PennDOT highway occupancy permit, receipt of municipality report form from township supervisors within the commission's allowable review period, and any additional information required by the Susquehanna County Community Commission.
We have any questions?
I'd like to know from Mr. Ertil, who's here, the CEO. He claims the water is potable that is excreted or being sent out from the plant. If that's true, I'm asking if he brought any samples? Because he told me he would drink the water. So, did you bring any samples, Dan? So that you can show us that the water is pure and drinkable, and you can drink it in front of us?
Oh, but I drank in front of you at the site visit we had six months ago. It's potable, if I don't make that up. I wasn't asked to bring anything with me, so, you know, but...
It's not your main concern, what we're doing here. Right, no.
Can I ask, does anyone up there, or do any of them people live in Dimmock?
I do not. I don't know how many people live in Dimmock.
I lived there with bad water, still till this day. After the moratorium was lifted, our water went bad. It's a hundred percent gas saturation right now. I had a hog farm there, I just got out of it because of the fact that it's no way to actually farm or live. Our actual electric bill is in the three hundreds every month in the wintertime, just to heat sheds for water. Not that they do not deliver water on a daily basis, but the inconvenience that put on us and the strain since 2011 is hardly, you can't stand the distress, like, and how we've laid a relationship, me and him, it put on us over our water. Like, we didn't want to believe it, but the part that they're missing is, in 2011, the EPA came in and tested. Before the moratorium was lifted, he said that any fracking or any late groundwork in that vicinity of Dimmock area, where the moratorium is right now, can be catastrophic to the entire county's aquifer. Who's missing that point? It's not going to be just us that have no water. It's going to be the entire county without water. How do you sustain? That's my question.
Yes.
I'd like to know what kind of chemicals are being used to purify this waste? And what about the radioactive, the radioactive chemicals that are in the brine that goes onto the road? All that's going to go into the groundwater, and that affects everybody, entire county, all the way down to Susquehanna River Basin into the Chesapeake Bay. So what are the chemicals that are we using to clean them?
I don't disagree with you, but the planning commission would not know that answer.
May I ask, this CEO who's sitting here, Mr. Ertil? What chemicals are being used to clean the waste?
We don't use chemicals in the treatment of our waste except for making the pure water that we discharge. We use thermal processes, we use steam to boil the water through multiple effects. And then we use other treatment processes that do not require chemical, like, and let this get technical. I welcome anybody to go to our webpage, www.eurikaresources.com. You can see what we do, you can see technical responses to exactly what we do to the water, how we treat it. We don't drill into the ground, we don't add chemicals into the water that's discharged. Our water meets, and I'll say it again, that we discharge the EPA's secondary drinking water standard for water.
But yet we can't drink our own water, so that doesn't mean anything to us. We can't drink our own water. Thank you.
Yes.
Can I read the statement? I have three minutes.
You state your name.
Victoria Switzer.
Got some photos for you?
First, I want to ask you sir, is there a planning commission from Minnesota? So, a request that you table any of us tonight, presumably have representation. Okay, let's talk about, I have three minutes to make my case. Location, location. Regardless of Eureka's further setback, that's a moot point really, since they will be discharged in a pollution discharge into the small group dairy that leads into Burdick Creek. The facility will house tanks of toxic chemicals, I submit as a plan, as well as receiving truckloads of hazardous waste daily. Location, location, location. Center of Dimmock, residents, farmland, pastures with both bees and dairy cows are there. Trees will not disguise the true nature of the purpose of this facility. In a perfect world, gas wells wouldn't leak, spills wouldn't happen, hoses wouldn't break, tankers would not crash. Air wouldn't pollute, water pollution, there wouldn't be noise or light pollution. And there wouldn't be any accidental discharge of a toxic or hazardous waste suckling into the creek. The creek does not only provide drinking water for farm animals and abundance of wildlife, I have some pictures for you to look at, but pastures, properties, yards, about ten homes. It's in my yard, yeah, this is a personal fight, I have a dog in the hunt. Families who use the creek for recreation enjoy it. Accountability, so if, or when, an incident occurs, would we be notified promptly? All those families, how would we receive notification that ammonia or something was leaking into the creek from regulated discharge? Who would be responsible for the cleanup? Damages, losses, livestock, use of the creek? Would the Heitzman family, police, the land be responsible? Would Eureka be responsible? Do they have a bond or insurance policy? Who would pay for the cleanup? It could be costly, I can picture lawsuits, loss of animals, livestock. So, to the planning commission, I've been told you can't do anything, you just have to say yes. But I can ask you this, is there any facility, industry, operations that you would say no to, not here? If I do question the wisdom of this location, it's on a wetland adjacent to a tributary, adjacent to a creek that runs through homes. There are other locations that were probably more suitable, but maybe more expensive. So when would you say, not here, not now, maybe not ever? You have said no in the past, things that you didn't want in this community, so I do know you have that authority. I think now is a good time to try that again, to say no, enough is enough.
I'd just like to correct one point. We only have certain powers, and if they have met every requirement that is set for them, then we cannot say no. We're bound by rules and regulations that we have to go by. It's not that we don't sit here and that we don't sympathize with every one of you, we realize it could be our backyards. Can assure you, there's nobody here that thinks any of this is funny, but we have to do what we have to do, that we're bound by our rules. We don't have to agree with it, but sometimes we have to do that. And I'm not saying we are, I'm just telling you that's where we're coming from. Yes?
So who's setting your rules then? Because it said the Dimmock Township supervisors weren't allowed to, like, have a decision on any of this, and you say you can't have a decision. So is it the state that's doing like a preemptive law and telling you, you in your own community have no rights to make your own policies?
I would think, I'm actually surprised every township's not here, and maybe someone that is more closer than we can talk for them.
Well, I've read the articles on, they're there, it says it in black and white.
We all have the authority. We as a commission don't, but as citizens, you guys live in municipalities, and you're represented by people you elect to represent you. And you can have zoning, you can have ordinances, you can have regulations within your municipalities, just like you can within your county. But you have to muster a forum where you live, and it has to win. It has to be what the group wants. Now, in not supporting that, you forfeit some protections. As landowners who want the ability to do things with your land, you have to weigh and balance that. You can't, you can't make the rules as the game comes to you and you realize what rules you wish you'd made. You have to, that's what planning is. Now, over the years, zoning has certainly been addressed in this county, and it's been turned back every time it was addressed. And so, in not erasing zoning, forfeit some of these things. You don't have to love it, but if you want to control it, own it. And that, those are the rules, we didn't make those rules. Everybody who lives in Susquehanna County made those rules. And you're living with the rules you made. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, but that's life in a nutshell. You know, I get it, like, we have things, look, I grew up next door to a landfill. It was my entire childhood with my dad trying to hang on to the things that were good in our, in our community. But, nothing's changed in forty years, right? There's no more regulations in this county than there were then, and that's on us. You know, don't look left and right, look in the mirror. We all possess the ability to do something if you want to. It's just how invested are you? Nice like tonight, come along, you'll feel empowered for a week or two. And we'll all slide back into the groove that is life, and get back to the business of doing it. So, we have an ordinance, the ordinance has been in place for a long time, plan comes to us, we review it against that ordinance. We're not, you know, we're not EP, we don't know groundwater, we don't know chemicals, that's not our job.
So you don't have any preemptive laws that prevent, the state says that you can't make any decisions?
But we also don't have anybody sitting on this board from Auburn Township, or Dimmock Township, or Lathrop Township, or Springville Township, or Hot Bottom Borough. You are the people in those areas that should find somebody that would sit on here, and then go and ask that they be appointed by the county commissioners. That's taking initiative.
I was told at zoning board meetings that oil and gas cannot be zoned. I went to the zoning board meetings years ago, and I questioned oil and gas. And they said, even if you have zoning, you can't do anything about oil and gas. So what would you answer that?
This isn't oil or gas. This is a, this is a bedroom industry to oil and gas.
It's related, it's taking care of the waste.
But there's a lot of things that are related. Like, I'm building a business to sell spare parts is related. This isn't oil, this isn't gas. I don't know zoning. I don't want to sit here and say that I know the regulation you detect, but what I'm saying is, I spent enough years on this planning commission, you see a lot of plans come to us where people wish they could have stopped it. But you can't stop it today. People are allowed to play by the rules as they were written the day they submit the plan. You can't change the rules after the horse is out of the barn.
But it doesn't, it doesn't mean that you can't find somebody to sit on this planning commission right now. You could go look, and then you can ask to have somebody appointed.
I asked a few years ago, and Lauren Salzman was appointed instead, and I'd like to ask, where is he?
He resigned.
He resigned, right.
For what reason?
I have no idea. Do you explain this?
However, however, it says right here that it's open.
Says it's open, but then the supervisors choose. The supervisors choose the people. Who chooses the people who are, who come up and say, I want to be on the board? They can't just go on the board, somebody has to choose it.
If enough residents come to the township supervisors and say, we have, we don't have anybody, we want somebody, and they will, then they'll be like, but I don't think that it comes from the supervisors because it's a term that is in different townships.
We serve as a pleasure of your county commissioners.
The commissioners, right, so it's the county commissioners who are choosing the people, so...
No, it's not true.
So who's choosing them?
We have input, they have input.
So the two of you, the board, the planning commission, and the commissioners choose the people?
We normally don't have a lot of...
So just like we wanted, we wanted Chuck to be on there, and then they chose Lauren Salzman, and now Lauren Salzman...
And that was just the way it came down.
And Lauren Salzman...
Right, we couldn't have both of them.
So that's just the way it came down, it's the way the vote went, the commissioner and the commissioners.
So if the other person resigned, maybe the person that you originally wanted would be willing to take it.
Under the letter of interest, whatever.
Sir, if you had a question?
Yes, in your opening statement, you said that Comtech bordered that property that Eureka's wishing to lease, and that is not true. There's about four hundred foot in between, it's owned by Harvard Mile and Ever. And also, I'd like to state that there's only about an eighty acre watershed for that creek, the whole creek there. And your discharge, and your plan on discharge and invoke, I don't know where the discharge is going to be, but where would you discharge? You have wetlands on, all on the east side there, the whole wetland. There's only one part that's a stream leading from out one pond to the other pond that's owned by that property. That's the only place you could discharge.
I believe that's where we'd discharge, wherever the DEP approved.
It's going to have to go into the pond first.
No, we're discharging downstream of the pond that's on the Dallas property. Downstream of that pond.
How come you aren't going to discharge in the stream that runs between the two ponds?
It's complicated, my understanding, it's complicated, most notably because of the enhanced wetlands, the exceptional valley wetlands. Not to mention, not to mention, the DEP basically made it quite clear, there's no discharge to a pond or anything leading into a pond.
Well, that way it gets discharged into the stream, and we own the farm on the east side of the road too, and who gets blamed for if there's a problem with water? The first people that get blamed are farmers, every time, they always say it's the farmers.
All we could say to that is, we went through a very lengthy process to get this discharge permit, which is not our first permit, by the way, and we did, we went way above and beyond, in our opinion, what had to be submitted, all the analytical, all the supporting documentation, all the years of experience operating our existing facilities. And that was a rather rigorous process. I recognize the point you're making, all I'm saying is, we jumped through every fiery hoop that the DEP put in front of us.
If the water's drinking water standard, why isn't it being reused? Why wouldn't it be pumped down the stream, two miles and pumped out down to Walbrooks's, or down to Lemon, or down to Machopan, or down to Sub Van... That's what I can, an eighty acre watershed, that's probably pushing, probably about sixty to five.
I'd like to point out, I'm Matt Neen, and I live in Dimmock Township. I don't care what the US Geological Survey or the county says, that is dry for most of the summer anymore. The weather has changed, I supplement my cows, my farms right after Ever. There is no drinking water in the Burdick Creek or the Tributary most of the time of the summer anymore. So I guess I have pure water for my cows till we end the time, you know? And my kids, when they're in water, do go with me to get the cows, they like to play in that creek. Would any of you let your kids do that after this, honestly, sitting up there? I'd lose my milk market, I'm one of the last farmers in this town. Is that it?
So who pays for the feeders? Who pays for the water?
I'm out of business because they live here.
Your animals grow green, have water native water, she's got some good roots, what's her down to?
Is that what I'm supposed to do, just pull it up? Honestly, hundred years, I'm sure that my property has the economy of this county, and you guys call it, I'm done. Somebody raises a stick, and it will happen. Do I sue you? Do I sue my police? Do I sue Dr. Heitzman? How I feel, I've been... Are you going to help me do that? Will you tell me that right now? Do you buy my property? The answer's no, because you're looking off that way.
I mean, I can look right at you, I talked to you before.
Yes, you do, I told you I didn't like it then.
I understand that, and I don't come up against anybody.
Your factory, I saw it, I don't want that to happen. That shouldn't be our centerpiece, honestly. Right in the center of our town, it's going to make more traffic than there are to you on a dangerous intersection. You can tell me there's going to be thirty-five trucks a day, I drive back and forth on six all the time, there's way more than that going. And you can tell me you're going to build the same facility to discharge half the water out of? Bullshit, and I'll say that, they can throw me out of here, I don't care.
And who's going to take care of all the roads that are destroyed from trucks running, 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 and the lives that have been lost?
Thank you.
Would my computer work here? Because I don't want something down there.
Actually, actually, I was, excuse me, actually, I was just going to ask the commission, this is just what I think. I think the plan should be tabled until after Dimmock Township's meeting. I think Dimmock Township needs to weigh in on this plan. I'm really surprised they don't have anybody here knowing the volatility.
We have a supervisor here, Ron Reese's handout.
Okay, so, can you enlighten us to where you're going with it?
Not a whole lot, because, reiterate what you said earlier, there's not much we can do, as long as there's the DEP approval and following the regulations. We've been in touch with our solicitor frequently about this. These towns more or less have to remain neutral, if they're not doing anything wrong, we don't have the authority to stop.
So we would be asking for your review and comment. I'm sorry? I said, so we would be asking for Dimmock Township's review and comment of this plan, since it lies in your area? I mean, I understand what you're saying, we're at the same juncture.
Right.
All the keys are crossed, all the eyes are batted.
Right. That's our understanding as well, so...
Yes, pardon?
I just wondered if I could comment on what you said, that there's not much you can do about it. But I wonder if the people in Dimmock and the council, whatever you call, know all the facts, because this is such a new industry. And I don't think we can go back to where they've done it before to find out the truth about the water emissions, if it's really potable, or the air emissions, if it has really cleaned out all of the chemicals that go down from the fracking and come up from ourselves. There's radium two twenty-six that comes out of there. And I'd like to know what's going to flow out. They say you could drink it, but I don't really, I'm not confident that that's true. And I just wanted to suggest that the planning commission do their own investigation, and not just take the word from what they say is going to be like. And there's...
Yeah, that basically falls under the township? It doesn't fall under the planning commission, it's not in our wheelhouse to do that?
Well, years ago, not years ago, but months ago...
We do plans, we don't do water, we don't, we're planning.
I know you don't have any power to make water regulations or air emissions regulations, but it seems to me that if you have questions in your community about it, you could pause, and you have the power to ask the DEP to let you wait until you find out more and ask them more questions.
You're correct, and again, we would ask the township to do the same thing, it lies in their municipality.
The other thing is, there's an engineering company on this, the engineers, I don't know that they weigh in on the incident. We haven't heard from them.
Myself. Gerald, did you want to take that?
Yeah, we use two consulting firms as part of the development of our plans. One is represented here today. This is Chuck... One is represented here today. This is Chuck. Our county commissioners are famous. We're working right now with Eureka on designing the layout of the plant and the equipment going over. Particularly with track engineering, that's the building plans that you see before you. And those are more related to the stormwater and planning aspects. We are now working on the arrangement of all of the equipment. There's a magic building, and they'll get the science of the important. We also have worked on the project at Standing Stone and a lot of the design work with Standing Stone.
Yes?
I wanted to ask, Standing Stone, I had assured you when I went up there that they didn't have any plant, the size of the size that they've given you, that was it. It wasn't going to have, get any bigger. I hope that's true, but I do remember in a conversation that Mr. Earl had assured me that the size, that the size is going to be. But the other gentleman, I don't remember his name. He said they sure would like to get their hands on the Burger Creek property. Then he stopped talking, which would, which to me is the other water treatment facility that's already there. So would that be an expansion, or would they make that just, that whole area? Dimmick would be one big water treatment facility if they combined with the property that he did engage in to procure the left again. Just a thought. Expansion. Would you approve the expansion?
You want a comment there? As far as Lauren Salzman goes, our understanding is that he resigned over this issue as his opposition to it. Whoever that's worth. But also, when Eureka first came to Dimmick with a proposal, it was, we were under the understanding it was going to be just a transfer facility. And now with this expansion and the new plans, it looks like we're more into a processing facility now. We've certainly increased from, you know, the size and the scope of the whole project from the way it was initially proposed to us.
Kevin? From my experience, the PAVEP is probably one of the strictest and most thorough departments in the country. Do they have any concerns over the quality of the water?
No.
I will say, I think it's very important to make one very important statement here. This is not a drinking water plant, okay? This is an oil and gas wastewater facility. And we are the only facility and company in the state that designs our plants to meet de-wasting standards that the DEP Waste Bureau sets forth. The DEP Waste Bureau assembled the standards for the de-wasting list of parameters based on drinking water standards, okay? It's based on drinking water standards. That is different. We are not, per DEP regulations, we have to basically treat down to that de-wasting level. We can't call it drinking water. This is not a drinking water facility, okay? We are meeting the most strict water quality standards, these de-wasting standards that the DEP has assembled for these facilities to allow for a redefinition of residual waste to fresh water. It's no longer a waste, if you mean these de-wasting standards. I just want to clarify, this is not a drinking water plant. The DEP does not have any regulations in the oil and gas wastewater treatment set of their regs.
So should my cows drink it?
Like I said, this is not a.
Would he reserve for my cows then?
This is not a potable water facility. And I will say this, I think it's also important to say, and I'm probably speaking ahead of myself here, but our discharge, and I will stand behind this because I'm the keeper of the analytical data of our F1 quality, it's cleaner than any receiving stream we ever discharge into. Right now, it's only one, Susquehanna River at our Standing Stone facility. It is cleaner than the river that we discharge into. I can't stress that enough. And I could back that up with, with nine, eight years of data.
But that's also pointing out the Susquehanna, which is like a cesspool. Like, our little stream ain't nothing close to what's going in there. Like, that's our fear. Like, I mean, it's just our livelihood. It's our vice. It's not just, I mean, I live with delivered water. Animals will not drink or need a water. I feel for Matt. Like, he is one of the last farmers in our family, man. Like, it's like, you've got no choice. You're beaten. It's a labor of love. Truly, it is. If it wasn't handed down throughout the years. Even me, I was a hot farmer. Like, my dad loved them. I got in with it, thought, okay, I'm going to do this again. It just can't work. It can't. Like, the cost of consumption, and once our well land. It was like, this is crazy. And it was like, you can't get a return. There's no return. No different than Matt. He goes out, he milks his cows, and it costs him $5 a day to milk feed one of his cows in their barn. It's the real of it. Like, it is, with the price of feed right now, like compared to what they pay. And it's so sad to know that, like, we didn't move to the country. I'm not saying that everybody don't have a right. I love that this industry come here. It brought a lot of jobs. Yes, we were very highly affected by our water. But yet, I'm not angry over the people that had helped, because we were for a community. But yet, there's got to be a certain point where we've got to say, as a community, enough's enough. We don't need this toxic waste dumped on us. Like, and that's what it is. It can't guarantee no such thing as a spill. Like, no different than a well frac that, okay, the casing went bad. Nobody knows that. But once your water's gone, there is no, like, saying, let's just give it back. Like, there ain't none of that. And I can feel for Matt. Like, he has a family. He's got young children. Like me and Kim, we're very fortunate. We don't have that. We noticed our water was bad when our animals would not drink it. We had no clue. I went to New Milford Hardware, bought filters and put them on. We had no clue that we had 100% saturation. Literally, you could take my garden hose and shoot a flame. Like, there's nothing you can do about it. Like, they tried drilling another, and they hit just as much gas. Like, so they delivered. I thank God for parish. Like, he brings us water every day. But it's a hard way to live. Like, and the same thing. I can understand Matt. He's put a lot in with it. He loves it. It's a labor of love. It's all he knows. And he's saying, like, his wife, his children. It's like, you're taking away something that will never come back. And that's his greatest fear. I can see it. Like, every one of us can see it. Like, it's not just made up. It's real.
Okay, one, a couple more questions, and we're going to move on.
My name's Ken Neely. My wife Debbie and I live in the township. The creek runs right through our property. Our grandchildren like to play in. We did it. Gentlemen from Eureka, we're kind enough to take us on a tour of their facility, Standing Stone. I was impressed by the technology. But there are some issues that we're concerned about. One is the number of trucks that are going to be delivering wastewater to your facility. Is there a legal limit that they cannot exceed, how many trucks come in there? Because with gas production increasing all the time here, I can think of you need a greater and greater need all the time to have this wastewater treated. So is that, is there going to be a self-imposed limit? Or does DEP say you can have only so many gallons coming into your facility per day? How is this?
The permit issued by the DEP limits the amount of barrels we can treat through the facility and the amount of barrels we can discharge.
Who monitors that?
The DEP and us, every day of the week, 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
How many barrels and how many trucks to that?
That's what we disclose. I think it's probably on one of those plans, but definitely in the permits that some of you have morphed up. And I think it's a three, it's 2,800 or 3,000 barrels a day. 2,800, I think.
2,800 barrels a day?
Right.
That's the wastewater. And that, how many, how many barrels of?
80%.
Treated water, 80%.
80% of that.
Now.
168,000 gallons per day.
Okay. Now, I also asked you, when we toured your facility, what kind of a stream of discharge in water is going into Burger Creek? And I was surprised when you answered it was about the discharge of a garden hose running all the time. So that many gallons of water can be discharged in a day? Just at this rate of flow of a garden hose?
Just convert the gallons, the gallons that he said?
Right.
The gallons per minute?
Okay, then there's the velocity. It's a velocity difference.
Yeah, some of you, if you were there, you saw what the discharge from the plant at Standing Stone looks like, and that's what I was referring to.
Well, unfortunately, we weren't able, not able to see the discharge.
It's not read by the plant, but it was in the video we shared. And again, now you can walk down there. Now you can get there.
Will we be chased away with a legal drought contract?
No, no, that's not your property. That doesn't happen. No, no.
So do you have plans to increase the size of the facility and thereby increase the number of trucks coming in?
There isn't room. And that, these people can talk. We can't.
So I guess my question is, most of your questions are for that gentleman?
Yeah, same work.
Have you guys not had meetings?
No.
You haven't had a chance to hear your grievances with their company?
We have, last year.
Dimmick Township? You've been to Dimmick Township to listen to these people?
Yeah, we presented, I think it was last April.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I see this, the majority of the questions are more for you, not for the planning commission.
I have a question for the planning board. I understand what you were saying about zoning. And I understand that you have to follow all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. You don't have any choice. What I'm asking the planning board is if all the t's are crossed and all the i's are dotted, who makes the final decision of what is going to go into our county? I mean, as far as township, we only have a small township and a few people. You look at the whole county, there's more people, there's more votes and so forth. Who makes a final vote on what industry can come in before you even get to the planning board?
That would be your township.
Your municipality.
Each municipality has that right to say what comes in and what doesn't. Again, it goes back to whether you want zoning or not. And the majority of people in Susquehanna County do not want zoning. I don't want people telling me what I can do with my property. But when next door they build something I know why, I realize I can't complain. Because I voted against it.
Okay, can the planning board accept the rules that they have, they've awarded this to you? But now can you add personally, as a planning board, say, this is exactly what we want from you, and we can add extra protections?
So our ordinance is already written, and it calls out all of those protections that we have deep fit, right? So the issue is that the requirements that you look for in subdivision or in planning are screening, are driveway permits, are sewer planning. Now, we don't issue driveway permits. We require them be issued by the issuing agency. Sewer planning, we don't do sewer planning. We require it be done to the municipality's satisfaction. All of these things that you see in the ordinance are us checking to make sure that the municipality has been satisfied. So when it comes to us, it's really just a last look. We have rules for setbacks for light pollution, for issues like that to protect neighboring landowners to the best of our ability with the subdivision ordinance. But that's like, it's like using a ball peen hammer to do finish nails. It's a tool, and you can use it to do it, but it's not the right tool for it, right? So we have some of these things in the ordinance to protect people from light pollution, to put screening in, to say that you don't have to look at the businesses next door. But they're not, they're not the right tool. It's just the best tool we have. When you talk about local government, you can't exclude businesses, right? And even in a zoning ordinance, you have to provide for all uses.
Yeah, I understand.
So, so, right, and if you had zoning, in all likelihood, it doesn't help you here, because you're putting same with same.
But when you go to township, but in all honesty, you all live in a small rural area, like Dimmick, Springville, whatever. And you have two or three supervisors. They're taking care of our dirt roads and a few of the other roads. And there's, there's issues that, they don't know how to deal with some of these things that is in front of you. So it's almost unfair to blow it all onto a township supervisor who really is working on the mechanics of your trucks and snowplow. So, you know, everyone blows blame, blame on everybody else. But we have to figure out where, as a community, where are we going to really?
I don't want to pick on them, but don't let anybody off the hook. I knew when I signed up to be on planning commission that I was going to have nights like this. And he knew when he signed up to be township supervisor that he was going to have nights like this. And it's your job to lean on us.
And the basis of a Commonwealth is that the lowest power has the most power. And the state of Pennsylvania is a Commonwealth, so the lowest form of government has the most power. That is the way it comes from.
But you went to the lawyer, and the lawyer says we don't have any power.
Because they've met the requirements.
So all of the rules that were already written have been satisfied. This gentleman presented a plan that satisfied every requirement that the people in Susquehanna County laid out in front of them. He did his job, exactly the way we asked him to do it. That's what he did. Now, we might not love that that's the business that came, but we laid out the rules. And when we look at this, when DEP looked at it, when the township supervisors looked at it, they all said he checked every box.
Okay, but let me ask you now. You said you see a problem in that, a piece of property that doesn't, that doesn't fit in with your property.
Let's see what happens.
Yes, we're going to take one more question, and then we're going to move, we're going to move aside.
Great gentleman. I live in Dimmick. The Burger Creek runs right from the backyard of my house. I don't want a discharge coming in here. And they got numerous violations by DEP for illegal dumping, illegal discharging, and ammonia leaks. These are facts that are done by DEPs. Around DEPs' lips, I can see all the violations that you have. So putting a plan that has all these violations already, yeah, what's going to happen to us? They dump a hundred gallons of ammonia, whatever, you know, what are they doing up there? We're not going to know. Who's going to protect us? Who's going to evacuate us? Who's going to notify us? And who's going to pay for the problems? And pay for our lives? And these are questions to you, not them. These are facts. Look it up.
Thank you. Okay.
I might be able to clarify quite a bit of that.
All right, Brett.
My name's Brett Jennings. I have been hired before to look at industrial wastewater plants up in New York for, for treating oil and gas. Until the city of Portland passed a law to ban it, even from other facilities. But yes, even, like, they've had issues with OSHA for the crystallization building where the impeller blew out the walls and ceiling. That was 2015. Hopefully, that design has been corrected. There's also an EPA study on centralized waste treatment point source category for facilities managing oil and gas extraction waste. Some of their issues were, at the time, there was only 11 facilities identified that treated oil and gas waste. Oil and gas waste extract, or extraction waste contain very different constituents, including BOD, bromide, whoo list of stuff, including alpha, beta radiation, radium, two different types.
Do you have anything pertinent to this, what they're talking about, discharge of that creek?
And, yeah.
Can we get to that part?
And this is just from their summary. You know, EPA approved analytical methods do not exist for many constituents found in oil and gas extraction waste. Current 40 CFR Part 437 does not contain limitations for many of the pollutants common in the film. And that you can see in the permit where there's no discharge limitation on some of the stuff that they have to test for. A lack of clarity exists regarding community application of current community wastewater treatment affluent guidelines to a facility. And where is?
Okay, I think we've got enough rules. We're going to move on here. You had a question?
I would just like to thank you.
I'll let you close it. I'll let you close it.
I'm sorry, ladies, you're getting beat up and you can only do so much for one. For two, I, as resident of Dimick, would like to respectfully ask that perhaps you guys table this until our next township meeting? And perhaps, much honored, again, at your guys' next meeting, if that would be a possibility.
I feel it's possible, I don't know what the rest of the commission would like to do. We either A, table this and bring it up after Dimick Township has a chance to review it at their meeting, and give us a review and comment on what their feelings are, which I would hope all of you people that are in the Dimick Township area would attend that meeting and let your elected officials know what you want. Or we can do a vote here tonight, so, leave it up to the commission, what, let's say.
I have a little map of the table.
Let me take it off the table at the next meeting.
Table until then through their meeting, we'll bring it to the next meeting here.
Um.
If not?
Like.
Go ahead, Matt.
I hear all of this. I don't know what changes.
It doesn't, it doesn't, we, we either we say it, they're acting that we're tabling it, or they're not actively because we give, we're giving it a preliminary and, and going to do the same thing next month anyway.
Our, our, all right, and that, and I just want to say that out loud, that's my take on this. This plan came to us with everything that was required. I wouldn't vote in support of table, I'll say that. If somebody makes that motion, I'll hold my peace, but.
We can just do a motion then, if you want to make a motion, make the motion.
I make the motion that we grant preliminary approval of the Eureka Water Resources LLC Susquehanna Treatment Facility, conditioned on the receipt of DEP approval of the sewer planning, approval of the Penta Highway occupancy permit, receipt of the municipality report form from the Dimick Township supervisors within the commission's allowable review period, and any, oh, there is no any additional. So I'll stop that motion right there.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
No, no, they passed that.
So. So they passed, can you explain what you just voted on, because there's.
They passed it.
Did you weigh or?
No, I made the motion to.
You just read it, you didn't listen?
Yeah, I did listen, but there's a discrepancy here in understanding. So you just, you just approved the preliminary approval?
The motion for preliminary was to approve the preliminary. As presented.
And what's your name, so we can have your name, and what group, what township are you with?
My name is Matt Curley.
And who you are with?
I am in Middletown Township.
I suggest you go to Dimick Township and buy a house and see how you do there. Dimick Township, Dimick Township is still hasn't told us that they accepted.
Yeah, you're smiling at Eureka, not the people that are suffering.
We have to wait for Dimick Township to say that they're, that they're doing it, that's just, that's why it's only preliminary.
It's based on the township.
No, we'll work with off by the Attorney Generals and everyone else right now. I don't know if you guys seen the news, but about the water and how much corruption there is with this water and DEP. They've brought charges against DEP, Attorney General.
Just preliminary, it's just preliminary. It's not final.
They, their job is done. And they still need the other things that are not, they approved. But why can't you do the same for the people of Dimick?
You can roll that off.
No, the people of Dimick can do the same thing for the people of Dimick.
No, because you just took our chance on me.
No, 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 it's a preliminary.
It's a preliminary.
It's, it's conditioned on receipt of their report from your township meeting. What we did is we gave approval based on all the things that are missing being satisfied.
So can Dimick, can Dimick say no, can the supervisors get together with the people and they say no? Can they stop it that way? Can they say no?
They have to have standing, they have to have, you have to have a legit legal reason, right? It's not what you want, it's what the law provides for.
So is there a legit reason anywhere?
That's not my job to know. Right, that's not my job to know, that's what Dimick Township's job is, that's what DEP's job is. Our job is to review it against our ordinance. That was done here tonight, that was done by our staff in the last month, it satisfied our ordinance.
Well, we don't appreciate that you didn't table it at least. You could have at least tabled it like Mr. Frank said. So we don't appreciate your position.
Not that I'm not interested in the rest of your meeting, but obviously, you're, you're done with our, we're moving on. Thank you for hearing us.
Appreciate you coming.
Okay, subdivision of Land, uh, Development Review, Section, I'm sorry, B, Section 102.2, review and comment. Dan Moore and Kenneth, minor subdivision, Clifford Township, no objection, existing driveway, existing sewer system.
We're looking for a positive comment.
I'm sorry, we have a positive comment.
We have a second?
I'm not good.
You're late. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion pass.